It being after 7:30, I will call the meeting of the Reading Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners to order. This meeting of the Reading Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners is being held remotely on Zoom and streamed live on RCTV and YouTube. The RMLT Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the Chair on items on the official agenda. We ask that all questions or comments from the public be directed to the Chair and that all parties, including members of the RMLD Board, act in a professional and courteous manner when addressing the Board or responding to comments. Once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. It is the role of the Chair to maintain order in all public comment or ensuing discussion. Will all participants please identify themselves, starting with those participating via Zoom? Jackie?
Can she hear you?
It might be better, Marlena, if you move that way. Near that white speaker, I think, is where it's coming out.
You want me to...
If you go to that end of the table?
Sure. With my little book. This one?
Yeah, you can do that.
You want two others to step?
All right, and see if Dave can hear you.
Can you guys hear me? Jackie and Dave, can you hear me?
Yeah, no, I can't.
Is it that thing?
I think it's coming out of that.
Some of it's coming out. I don't know if the speaker's there. Can you hear us, Dave? Can you hear him?
Marlena, I think the microphone is actually...
RCTV. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. We can hear you. Maybe you should say your name and make it sound again. Identify yourself as you normally look in the Zoom sound.
Followed by town. Enter your participant ID, followed by town. Otherwise, just type in town and continue.
Please, Marlena.
Are you kind of in? Can you hear us? Dave, I'm going to call your cell phone from the other phone, okay?
Just do a three-way conference. Well, three of them.
Oh, wait. Here. Try now. Sorry. Can you hear us now? Try again.
Say hello again.
Hello? Can any remote participants hear us?
Speak into the... Just look over your shoulder.
No.
Say something into that microphone.
Can the remote participants hear us?
That's RCTV. That probably won't work. I'm just going to do it this way.
Nothing.
It's that speaker right there. Could you speak into that, Bob?
No, I didn't dial into this one yet.
It's not dialing yet.
I'm just going to...
I think you're going to hit...
Former Marlena, being very flexible.
Going to those yoga sessions. We definitely have our IT team on call and like...
Oh, yeah, good.
Yeah.
Oh, that works pretty slow. You get IT pay in.
Hello?
Hi, can you hear us?
Perfect. Can you hear us? So, we're going to use this phone, so you can get your sound off, anything else.
How do you put this one?
No, I think it's...
They get someone already.
I'm on the phone.
Perfect. Jackie, I'm going to call you in. I don't know if you can hear me.
That's great. Good. Thank you, Erica.
She was in here. She might want to...
Jackie, did you leave?
Did she leave? No, I think she did. Okay, she said... She texted me she can hear better on YouTube, so she said to watch there. Perfect.
Okay.
All good.
So, the one participant identifying themselves through Zoom is Dave Talbot, and Vice Chair Pocino is not in attendance. Would Bob, would you serve as the Secretary?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Are there any liaisons present that would like to comment? Yes, Karen Herrig.
Madam Chair, thank you for recognizing me. Karen Herrig, I'm Reading, Reading's Board of Commissioners. So, we're here. Would you like me to come up and speak in a particular speaker?
I think this one's the only one that works.
I think so.
Okay.
Well, we're going to huddle around that speaker over there. I think it's probably best.
If you want to come here, this way.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. So, I just wanted to say for myself, and hopefully others in the Reading community were thrilled by the new EV chargers, and so excited, and thank you for inviting the Select Board to the ribbon cutting. I plan to attend, and I'm sure others will as well. I did want to alert you that we are going to be working on EV-specific parking regulations. It's come to our attention that we'll need some of those. So, I did ask staff at Town Hall to please be sure to reach out to you all and coordinate with you because there's chargers, yes.
There's some. We want to get them started, and we know that that's coming up. Great.
Yeah, because my experience with... You could be fined and discouraged from parking too long by the charger system as well. So, just encourage that cooperation and want to give you a heads up. We anticipate we may be seeing a draft before the Select Board on July 19.
Okay.
And, oh, the other item was... I know Colleen had been working with regards to green communities. We are still anxiously awaiting approval at the State House, and apparently sometimes they don't get everything they need to get done, done, and they get... It slips into August. So, I understood she was working with one of your industry folks, the letter?
Yes.
Okay. I would love to, as a member of the Select Board, Reading Select Board, please advocate for RMLD to please...
Yes.
...you colleagues who are advocating with that letter. And I will, on Tuesday is the next Select Board meeting, I will bring that forward to them as well. So, that's it.
Just an email from a day or so ago?
Yeah. Is that... Yeah. So, I'll read that carefully, and I'll bring it to their attention. And we... You may be able to act quicker than we can, but I would love your support, and let's keep pushing.
Absolutely.
And I talked to Senator Lewis, and they are working on it, and he's still very optimistic. But, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Is there anyone available for public comment? Mr. Coulter, do you have any reports on the CAB?
Nope. Chase, this is Bob. We're in the meeting. Craig spoke. Hameed spoke. Wendy spoke. We'll all see the same information. It was a good meeting.
And our acting General Manager is Mr. Phipps.
Great. Good evening. Can you guys hear me okay? Dave? I'll assume you can, unless I hear otherwise. So, just for the General Manager's report, what I'm going to be doing for the next several sessions is focusing primarily on talent acquisition. I'll give you a quick update on a couple of things that we're doing. Is there a chance that you can pull up? So, what I wanted to do is just direct everybody to the RMLD website, and on the main page, there's a button on the right-hand side called Employment, and on it, it lists basically the open positions. There are about 11 open positions, some technical, some analyst. There's a variety of different roles within RMLD. Perfect. Okay, great. So, up on the screen, there are these different positions. One of the things that we're doing with the new Communications Manager, one of the recent hires, that was an open position on there up until a couple of weeks ago, Julie Blakely or Julie Blackley is our new Communications Manager. She is very adept in terms of our industry, in terms of social media. So, one of the things we're going to do in coordination with HR is be more active in terms of promoting RMLD as a dynamic entity, working in a very dynamic and changing industry. This is an industry where the rules are changing very quickly, driven partially by non-carbon, driven by electrification. It is an interesting and fascinating place. You guys know my passion for it, but hopefully that appears elsewhere in the organization. We went through several events at some of the local colleges. As a result of that, we have three summer interns that are here this summer. They were interested in the nature of what we do here at RMLD. So, they are currently overworking on a variety of things in IRD. One of them happens to be an electrical engineer from Merrimack, and a little bit later on this summer, the second part of his program, he will be working over in Engineering Department. So, there's active recruiting. The reason I mention this to you guys is twofold. One is networking is a common way for people to find opportunities, and so, as you and your conversations, as people talk to you about what you guys do, either Commissioners or Select Board, et cetera, there's a lot of fascination, a lot of dynamic nature in terms of what we're doing here at RMLD. We are literally creating a new utility. And so, that tends to be attractive to people who like a dynamic environment. Direct them to our website. Janet is our primary contact, but there's description on the website. They can talk to anybody that you know, myself included, in terms of what we do here. So, I just... I'm going to start doing stuff in a more specific manner, but I wanted you guys to know that HR and talent acquisition is a critical piece for RMLD. There's a series of transitions that are happening, partially because of growth, partially because of open position, and partially because of some retirements that continue to come on this summer. So, that's one piece. The second thing is, our plan in the month of July is to commission an external salary survey. The last salary survey we did...
It was quite a while ago.
Quite a while ago. So, we use the MEEM survey, which we get on an annual basis, but in the new world that we're in, this semi-post-COVID, we're going to do, make sure that we attract the right people, and we're going to look at and retain as well. But we're going to commission an external salary survey. So, we have a couple of parties that we're going to pursue. We're going to work through the purchasing program, but that's one of the things that we're going to do post-haste. So, that's just a quick update. The focus today was purely on talent and talent acquisitions. Any questions, comments, or encouragements? Thank you.
Thank you. That's exciting.
I'll step right to the next one.
Yep.
All right. So, the next item is the annual report. And so, you guys should have received, this is a draft. It's actually what we view as a final draft of the annual report for 2021. It is a little bit different than... Well, it's different. So, the back half of it is the financial report, that is standard format, et cetera. But the front half is more focused on... It's more customer-focused. So, it is no longer organized by departments, operations, finance, IRD. It is organized around the customer and the compliments from a customer perspective. So, it is a noteworthy transition. Similar to what we did last year, it does have power supply in two different snapshots, one on a compliance basis, one on our strategy basis. There are construction highlights in here as well. It was a very productive year, but we've walked through all of the content here. So, the reality is, what's in here is similar to materials we've already presented to you, but we wanted to let you know that we are ready to publish it. Our goal is to get it approved by you guys tonight, unless there's any questions or comments. But it represents kind of a new focus that Colleen had championed for 2021, and obviously the theme was versatility. Questions on the annual report?
Anyone remotely have any questions? I think you can hear us.
Read the suggested motion.
Okay. Would you please?
Move that the Board of Commissioners approve the annual report for CY21 as presented on the recommendations of the General Manager.
I'll second that. All those in favor? Marlena, B to I.
Mr. Talbot, I.
That motion passes 3-0.
Very good. Thank you. The next topic is the E&amp;E Board of Directors. So, as you guys all know, Reading Municipal Light is an equity owner in Energy New England. As in the past, Colleen, as the General Manager, has been the representative of RMLD on that Board. Two weeks back, we both attended the most recent Board meeting together. She was given a very nice send-off with thanks and congratulations to her contributions to the E&amp;E Board on behalf of E&amp;E, as well as on behalf and representative of RMLD. So, the intention is that General Manager or the interim General Manager would fill the role that she has vacated, and that's the role that I would basically fill as the interim General Manager effective today, if you guys vote.
Okay. So, any further discussion on that, or should we entertain a motion now?
One question?
Please.
Does a Class B Director have any reflection on an interim General Manager?
Nope.
Okay. I just was wondering if you guys take it as a...
Yeah, no, that Class B is basically the level of equity ownership that we hold.
Okay.
I just have one question.
Sure.
Greg, if you could just kind of figure out a way to give us some kind of timely update about what the E&amp;E is working on, because obviously they're doing, having public meetings down in Mansfield, and many of those decisions kind of end up making E&amp;E know sort of what our plans are going to be. So, the more we can know in advance about what's coming down the pipe from E&amp;E, so we have a chance to talk about it with time to have an effect on it would be great.
Great. So, I think both in advance of the meetings and then report back after the meetings. I will take both action items.
Thank you.
So, with no further discussion, we can take a motion?
Okay. Suggestion motion, move that pursuant to Section 3.2 of the Operating Agreement of the Energy New England LLC, the Reading Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners hereby appoint Greg Phipps as a Class B Director of the Energy New England LLC Board of Directors for a term of three years.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Mr. Coulter, I.
Marlena, B to I. Motion passes 3-0.
Thank you, Marlena.
Yes.
All right. The item seven on the list is the 2022 NEPA Annual Conference. This is an annual conference. Many of you have been there or heard feedback from it. The 2022 event is being held in Stowe, Vermont in mid-August. It is an important regional event for the Commissioners, the CAB, and at least one or two of the senior management team to attend. This year, the topics are timely and relevant. The main topic is the evolving New England electricity landscape, navigating rapid change. That's the first highlight topic. The second topic is clean energy. The third topic is presentation by Commonwealth Fusion, a potential new way of generation, which is important to everybody, including us as RMLD. The next topic is fleet electrification. Again, relevant topic for us. There, of course, is the annual legislative update, which is a Washington legislative update. It's always useful. And then, the last topic is... The last main topic of the session is energy storage. So, all relevant topics to the world that we're traveling in right now. So, it's both useful content and information, as well as networking. I would strongly encourage as many of the Commissioners to attend, and I'll be asking for permission for me to attend.
And I plan to go. Is there any further discussion?
One comment for me.
Sure.
If the Board does want to attend, we would just, on the next meeting, have to do a motion and kind of same as...
Okay. So, if Erica says of just... Dave, can you hear what Erica said? That's all. I'll tell you later. So, if there is no further discussion, Bob, would you read the motion?
Sure. I moved that the Board approved Greg Phipps travel to and attendance at the NEPPA Annual Conference to take place August 14 through the 17th, 2022, at the Snowflake Mountain Resort in Stowe, Vermont.
I second that. All those in favor?
Mr. Coulter, I.
Marlena, B to I. Motion passes 3-0.
Thank you, Marlena.
Yes.
All right. The item seven on the list is the 2022 NEPA Annual Conference. This is an annual conference. Many of you have been there or heard feedback from it. The 2022 event is being held in Stowe, Vermont in mid-August. It is an important regional event for the Commissioners, the CAB, and at least one or two of the senior management team to attend. This year, the topics are timely and relevant. The main topic is the evolving New England electricity landscape, navigating rapid change. That's the first highlight topic. The second topic is clean energy. The third topic is presentation by Commonwealth Fusion, a potential new way of generation, which is important to everybody, including us as RMLD. The next topic is fleet electrification. Again, relevant topic for us. There, of course, is the annual legislative update, which is a Washington legislative update. It's always useful. And then, the last topic is... The last main topic of the session is energy storage. So, all relevant topics to the world that we're traveling in right now. So, it's both useful content and information, as well as networking. I would strongly encourage as many of the Commissioners to attend, and I'll be asking for permission for me to attend.
And I plan to go. Is there any further discussion?
One comment for me.
Sure.
If the Board does want to attend, we would just, on the next meeting, have to do a motion and kind of same as...
Okay. So, if Erica says of just... Dave, can you hear what Erica said? That's all. I'll tell you later. So, if there is no further discussion, Bob, would you read the motion?
Sure. I moved that the Board approved Greg Phipps travel to and attendance at the NEPPA Annual Conference to take place August 14 through the 17th, 2022, at the Snowflake Mountain Resort in Stowe, Vermont.
I second that. All those in favor?
Mr. Coulter, I.
Marlena, B to I.
Talbot, I.
3-0. Passes.
Very good.
Okay.
Wendy, basically, take the seat between you, that way she can be heard, and then...
So, we have to do another motion at the next meeting for Board members to attend?
Yeah.
Unless we want to do it now.
Do you want to do that now?
You might as well.
Do you want to do Board members attending now?
Oh, we can do it now.
If anyone knows they want to do it, we can just do a similar motion.
We could, but Phil loves to go, and he's not here. So, why don't we just wait?
Why don't you just do a number? Say up to four.
Yeah, sure.
That's what we did in the CAB meeting. That's what they did.
Okay. Thanks, Erica. Thanks, Bob.
Up to five.
Are you a maybe?
I'll do it. No, I think I'm going to go.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I would maybe a suggestion of a motion.
Let me read that.
Are you ready? A suggestion, move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners approve travel to and attendance at the 2022 NEPPA Annual Conference to take place August 14 through the 17th, 2022, at the Snowflake Mountain Resort in Stowe, Vermont for blank...
Five.
Okay. I'll put five.
For up to five?
Yes. Thank you.
Even better.
I moved that the Board approved travel to and attendance at the NEPA Annual Conference to take place August 14 through 17th, 2022, at the Snowflake Mountain Resort in Stowe, Vermont for up to five Commissioners.
And I'll second that, I guess. So, Bob Coulter, I. Marlena, B to I.
Talbot, I. I don't remember that we ever voted on this before, but it's good to do it, I guess, right?
It was with the new Policy 19 changes.
Was that right? Okay.
Yeah, we did it a couple of months ago with one of these. Okay. 3-0 to send us away. Report on town payments from Ms. Markowitz.
Good evening. Thank you. So, tonight, we just want to give you a quick update on the town payments. So, they happen twice a year, June 30 and 12/31. Both payments, the payment in lieu of taxes, which is the pilot payment to all four towns, and the return on investment to the town of Reading. So, the first page talks about the pilot payment breakdown. So, you can see right there, everybody's breakdown. It's based on $86 million of net plant and 658 million kilowatt-hour sales, and each town's payment is based on their particular load. Two payments, June 30, $860,000, and then the second payment on December 31st. The June 30th payment has already been issued to all towns, so each town has been communicated with and should have received their check by now. The second topic, which is the return on investment for the town of Reading. So, this is the first time that we are paying based on the new calculation formula that was voted by the Board of Commissioners on May 21st, 2020, and that is 3.875 mils per kilowatt-hour sale, based on the prior three-year average audited financials that show the kilowatt-hour sales. So, the next page gives you that breakdown. So, you can see clearly CY 19, 20, and 21, all sourced from the audited financial statements. Those are the kilowatt-hour sales, and the average three-year is 652 million kilowatt-hour sales, and you multiply that by 3.875 mils, which gives you the new total for 2022 of about $2.5 million. Three years prior, it was $2,480,000 each year frozen, so you can see there that there is a increase. And that was based on the health of the Reading Municipal Light Department versus the CPI. Questions?
Yes, Karen.
Oh, yes.
Can you mind doing that last calculation? I assume that you sent out a chart with pilot payments, but did that mean...
Sure. No problem.
Any other questions or comments?
All right. Thank you.
I'll say?
Yes. Thank you.
Read the motion, I guess, to approve.
No, no motion.
No, there's no motion.
There's no motion.
Okay.
IRD report.
IRD report.
Great. So, I'm going to just walk you through. One primary topic today is, in the context of a lot of press on energy costs going up dramatically, one of the things that we've been trying to do all first half of the year, and we're going to continue to do it because the energy prices that people see, particularly the gas bump, are significant. So, what we wanted to do is bring you guys up to speed, and the audience is not only you, but also do a clip you when customers ask you, either Select Board members or Commissioners. This material will also end up on the website in the next couple of days, but we wanted to basically give you a little bit of context in terms of what is really... What should be expected from a customer's perspective in terms of monthly electricity bills from RMLD. So, if I can draw your attention to the power supply context, in upper left-hand corner, the intention there is to remind you that natural gas makes up approximately 50% of the fuel source for ISO New England as a region. This particular chart was last Friday, June 17. It happened to be a snapshot of 64%. But the key point is that natural gas, the cost of natural gas, is the primary driver of electricity in the wholesale market in New England. That lower left-hand corner, in the summer of 2021, when we were putting together our 2022 power supply cost and budget, natural gas was about $3.50 per million BTU, and it had been pretty stable at that level. Obviously, we all know in February, due to the Russia's activities in the Ukraine, the cost of energy, specifically the cost of natural gas and oil, has been driven up significantly. So, summer of 2022, that $3.50 is now $7, roughly, $7.80 a million BTU. Again, that's a significant increase in terms of driving up the wholesale cost of electricity in New England. In fall of 2022, unless something dramatically happens, the forecast, and again, we look at forecasts on a regular basis, industry forecast, et cetera, but natural gas is going to be somewhere in the mid-$8 range per million BTU. All said and done, natural gas is about 130% higher than it was in 2021, which puts a dramatic impact in terms of the cost of wholesale energy, electricity, in New England. Now, in our power supply, that right-hand chart, if you remember, the colored charts are basically what we have under long-term contracts or intermediate contracts, meaning that the majority of our power, roughly about right now, the forecast, right now, the status is about 87% of our power is under fixed contracts. So, we know what the cost is. So, this incredibly high increase of wholesale market is only impacting about 12% of our cost structure. That's really good news. In the center of that chart there, the 2022 RMLD power supply budget, the original estimate
and we're going to continue to do it because the energy prices that people see, particularly the gas bump, are significant. So, what we wanted to do is bring you guys up to speed, and the audience is not only you, but also do a clip you when customers ask you, either select board members or commissioners. This material will also end up on the website in the next couple of days. But we wanted to basically give you a little bit of context in terms of what is really, what should be expected from a customer's perspective in terms of monthly electricity bills from RMLD. So, if I can draw your attention to the power supply context. An upper left-hand corner, the intention there is to remind you that natural gas makes up approximately 50% of the fuel source for ISO New England as a region. This particular chart was last Friday, June 17th. It happened to be a snapshot of 64%. But the key point is that natural gas, the cost of natural gas, is the primary driver of electricity in the wholesale market in New England. In that lower left-hand corner, in the summer of 2021, when we were putting together our 2022 power supply cost and budget, natural gas was about $3.50 per million BTU. And it had been pretty stable at that level. Obviously, we all know in February, due to the Russia's activities in the Ukraine, the cost of energy, specifically the cost of natural gas and oil, has been driven up significantly. So, summer of 2022, that $3.50 is now $7 roughly, $7.80 million BTU. Again, that's a significant increase in terms of driving up the wholesale cost of electricity in New England. In fall of 2022, unless something dramatically happens, the forecast, and again, we look at forecasts on a regular basis, industry forecast, et cetera, but natural gas is going to be somewhere in the mid $8 range per million BTU. All said and done, natural gas is about 130% higher than it was in 2021, which puts a dramatic impact in terms of the cost of wholesale energy, electricity, in New England. Now, in our power supply, that right-hand chart, if you remember, the colored charts are basically what we have under long-term contracts or intermediate contracts, meaning that the majority of our power, roughly about right now, the forecast, right now, the status is about 87% of our power is under fixed contracts. So, we know what the cost is. So, this incredibly high increase of wholesale market is only impacting about 12% of our cost structure. That's really good news. In the center of that chart there, the 2022 RMLD Power Supply Budget, the original estimate that we did, the budget was just a little bit under $61 million. That was pretty flat relative to what it was in 2021 actuals. But the reality is, as we mentioned before, the global context and the increased price, our forecast, our updated forecast using actuals through January through May of 2022, and then forecasted based on forward price curves and forward price forecast, we expect it to be closer to 66 million. That's about a 9% increase over what we had budgeted originally. What we're going to do since, what we are likely going to do, or what we're not likely, what we're in the process of trying to do, and as we generate additional contracts, we'll bring them to you. But we're probably going to increase our hedging. Typically, our hedges are somewhere between, our hedged power is somewhere between 80 and 85%. Right now, we're at 87%. We are striving to get into the mid 90s. And when I say into the mid 90s, we expect that this high cost of energy is going to continue for at least another 18, maybe 24 months. Obviously, a lot happens, a lot, that duration and the magnitude is influenced heavily by what's happening in Europe. And obviously, we don't have control over that as RMLD, but we have an idea of what's coming down the road. So, one of the things that we're in the process of doing is to increase our hedge. And the intention is to do those through, again, with the goal of being compliant, even though we've got flexibility to the best of our ability to do that through non-carbon sources. So, that's a little bit of context. If I go to the next slide, the real point here is, what does that mean for our customer? So, on the residential example, which is typically, you know, the majority of our customers, our customers are residential, the monthly bill drivers, when you think about monthly bills, that's how people tend to think, they're driven by customer usage, kilowatt hours consumed, they're driven by the monthly power supply cost. And remember, our monthly power supply cost is a pass-through cost. There's no markup on it. It's the actual cost that we, as RMLD, incur on behalf of the customers. We do make adjustments each month with a PPC. We do have two variables. One is fuel, one is PPCT. The PPCT is basically capacity and transmission. We forecast that. We have a buffer, a deferred, I mean, a restabilization fund. And then, on the fuel side, we have a fuel fund. So, our goal is to reflect actual costs, but also to dampen the volatility. So, we, so from a customer perspective, power supply is a key piece of it, and then there's the annual operating cost. So, let's talk about usage just for a moment. That lower left-hand curve, that lower left-hand chart is an average. So, in 2021, which is the light green one across the bottom, those are actual average numbers for each month of an average residential bill in 2021. And then, the darker green line above it, which is labeled 2022 on the right-hand side, is forecasted. So, it's actual through May and then forecasted through the rest of the year, June through December. On the left-hand side, those are dollars. So, you can see that a typical bill can range anywhere from just under $100 to up over $170. And you can see in the light blue, or the light green line, 2021, it went up to, you know, maybe $150, $155. But there is a seasonality associated with what customers pay each month. And that seasonality is driven primarily by usage. So, you notice underneath there, we have summer right there in the center of it. Usage tends to be higher in the summer, and that's driven primarily by air conditioning costs. So, whether it's 2021 or 2022, the bills that the customers are going to see in this summer are going to be higher than they did in April and May. And there's a pretty steep curve. So, the shape of those two curves are very similar between 2021 and 2022, and that's driven by usage. Now, things could change dramatically, but generally speaking, customer behaviors are pretty stable and pretty predictable. So, the shape of the curve should be very similar, and that's what this chart shows. The fact that the dark green line is higher represents the increased cost, which is primarily two factors. One is power supply, we talked about a moment ago, right, at 9%. And then, the other percent, the other portion of it is the operating cost. And remember, back in January of this year, we had put in place a rate change or a rate increase that started January. That is in place. It doesn't change. It will continue until we change it again. That might be next year or the year after. Potentially, it will be next year. But anyways, that's in place. The only real variability now, over the course of the year, between 2021 and 2022, month by month, is the power supply cost. On the right-hand side, just to give you an idea of what that means for a customer, that left-hand bar, 2021, the typical average bill was about $118, $118 to $120. But $118, an average residential bill, average for all 12 months. Remember, it's going to change each month, but if I do the average over the year, that's what 2021 worked out to be, $118. The forecast for 2022 is about 12% higher. So, there's rounding there. It's actually, this numbers, it's 12.7, but it's about 12% higher, which is $133. So, that $15 difference between $118 for the average monthly bill in 2021 and $133, the average monthly bill in 2022, has two components. One is what we call the base cost, the truly operating cost. That's the $51 versus the $56. That's what we put in place back in January. That's basically stable throughout the year. The variability that we had not anticipated was the power supply cost, which on an average monthly basis is going to go from $67 in 2021 to $70 in 2022. And that's that piece that's driven by the external markets and the amount of energy that we have in an open position or unhedged position. So, the key takeaway is, I think, for all of us, and we'll put more of this information on the website, but when people ask you, you know, what's happening to my, you know, so when they think, hey, the sky is falling, the reality is, for an RMLD customer, yes, the costs are seasonal, right? And as typical every year, summer is going to be higher. But if you look at the year overall, it's going to be the total monthly or the total annual expense is going to be about 12% higher than it was in 2021. And that is, we had originally forecasted that number to be less than 5%. It's now 12%. That difference is driven by the power supply cost and by the global factors. The good news is, it's about a 12% increase year to year on average. And if you look at the cost of gasoline or diesel fuel, which is in a range of 35 to 40% higher, or if you look at natural gas costs, we're over 100% higher. RMLD customers are in good shape where that rate shock or that cost shock is not significant. So, that's one of the takeaways for you guys to share, and we will share the same. The second thing is that summer costs will be higher, and that's typical due to air conditioning. And those are the key pieces that we wanted to share. We're going to make that information available to, on the website. We're scripting the customer service people. Summer, we always tend to get costs because, as you saw in 2021, the monthly bills tend to go up. So, before I jump to the next topic, any questions on customer cost?
Reading this, you know, doing my homework.
Yeah, please.
Is this based on all customers, upon all different usages?
Yes.
What you've got on this?
Yeah, this is.
Specifically, you know, a particular class of users?
No, so the class is residential. So, it's just residential, it's not commercial and industrials.
Okay, but it includes everybody?
Yep.
Those who use less and those who use more?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And we try and do all residentials because, you know, it kind of averages out, you know, everybody has a little different patterns, et cetera, but it, you know, allows us to do year-to-year comparisons of the entire class. So, it's the residential class, to give you an idea.
All right.
One other interesting point, you know, one of the questions that came up in the CAB meeting is, how does this compare to other utilities? So, we get every quarter, we contribute our rates, and we get a report back in terms of how our rates compare to other utility rates in the region, other MLPs, and also the IOUs. The IOUs are National Grid, Eversource, and Unitil. Those are the local ones. In the residential space, we are in the, we're in the middle of the MLPs, and we're significantly less than the IOUs. On the commercial industrial side, we're at the very low end of the scale relative to both MLPs and IOUs on the commercial industrials. Part of the reason behind that is the cost structure associated with them being very concentrated, primarily in Wilmington. One of the things that we do, and we talked about this before, residential, we acquire much more network to cover the residences because they're spread out more. Commercials tend to be more clustered. And so, it's easier for us, and less expensive for us, to provide at a cost-effective basis the commercial. And so, our rates reflect that. The other key thing to keep in mind, as we mentioned before, one of the things that we're able to do as an MLP is, we're able to do long-term contracts. And as we mentioned before, the majority, 87% for 2022, are in long-term contracts. So, we don't have, we're not exposed to that volatility that some of the other energy providers, and in particular, the IOUs, from a legislative perspective, they can only go in six-month contracts. So, an IOU is facing in the mid 30s, low 40s in terms of rates because of the power supply, and they're in, they're not allowed to do longer-term contracts. So, again, the point being is that, from an RMLD customer perspective, it's, right now, it's good to be an RMLD customer, bottom line. Any other questions?
It's always good to be an RMLD.
It's always good to be an RMLD.
Always good. It's always good.
Thank you, Phil. Thank you. All right. Let me jump to the next topic, renewable choice. So, as you guys know, we, last year, had worked on renewable choice. We had launched in February the residential program, which is in that table across the top there. We launched the commercial program and the industrial program in April of 2022. We had three levels, 50, 75, and 100%. We have done a fair amount in that first block, quite a bit of communications, newsletters, January, February, March. We've done, we did press release on it. We've done a fair amount, but it has not been adopted as much as we had hoped. And you can see there, so we have 66 residential customers, you know, out of 26,000. And we have one commercial customer after, commercial industrial out of approximately 3,000. We have two industrial customers that we're in discussions with that want to adopt it, and their motivation to adopt it is to meet their corporate goals, ones that are either national companies or global companies. And there are environmental targets that they are mandated to hit and for their operations that are in our territory. We expect, so we know that there'll probably be two of the larger customers that become part of this program, but they're trying to figure out what level they want to participate in. The challenge for private companies like, they're not, for public companies like that is, they balance the cost of participating in the program versus the corporate requirements. So, anyways, at the end of the day, you know, at the bottom, future promotions, one of the things that we are going to transition to in July of this year is initial presence in terms of social media. I think I mentioned before that Julie has joined us. She's got some experience in social media. We're going to wade into this space. As you can see some of the notes, we've got some community events that we're going to participate in. We're going to do some drawings, et cetera. We're going to try and, we're going to continue putting in the stuff that we typically do, website, newsletters that go out each month. But we're also going to try and be more proactive in terms of our CNI customers. We meet with the CNI customers on a regular basis. We're going to push it and promote it. We'll probably do some sort of a pitch as a press article. So, we're going to try and make it more noteworthy. The other thing, Commissioner Pacino, you had mentioned back in September when we approved it, you made a request that we go back and look at our annualized line in terms of looking at, do we want to make any adjustments to that in 2022? Right now, we are retiring 26% of all of our certificates. The idea behind renewable choice was allow customers to contribute to and retire more. So, we have on the agenda for September to kind of look at the annualized line as well in addition to what we do on renewable choice. So, I want to try and give an update, questions on renewable choice and what we're thinking about, or not thinking about, but doing.
Well, besides incentivizing joining the program based on its merits, could we incentivize to be one of the first 1,000 or 5,000?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
People to sign up?
Yep.
I don't know what, but.
Well, it'll turn into a contest of some form.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, that, yeah, that's a great, we thought about the contrast drawing, but maybe the, you know, some mechanism. Yeah, because it's, because it's an opt-in program that gives us a little bit of flexibility in terms of how we do it. We have to be consistent, but it's not, it's not a typical rate where we, we have to be fair, but we can do some creative stuff. So, that's a good idea.
Gift card to businesses in the four towns.
Yeah. Okay. More ideas are great, but we want to promote it. And part of it's communication, and part of it is, yeah, make it a contest of some form. So, we're aware of it. We just want to put more oomph to it. Other comments?
Any other comments?
Just, I'm disappointed in the fact that that number 66 is so low.
Yeah, it's not big.
It might be more than that, you know?
Yeah.
Those are the impact that most people don't get.
Say again?
Bill anymore. You know, how many mass mailings have gone out?
Yeah, I, yeah, I think Commissioner Coulter, there's a lot of, I don't know the number, but the ones that are on auto pay might not.
Go get it.
Might not just, it's just a, it's auto pay. So, I never see anything. So, part of it, you know, one of the things we talked about before was social media, why people don't come to our website that often unless they have questions? We're really putting a lot more, we have been, over the past six months, a lot more material on the website, but we've got to go where the customers are. And, you know, we're going to, we're going to put a couple, well, we're going to put a foot in the water, not just toe, we're going to put a foot in the water in social media. So, that's going to be another mechanism.
We need to get the word out, but we need to get the word out.
Yeah.
Because I've talked to people, and they don't even know this program exists.
Yeah, exactly right. So.
I tell them I'm in it, and they go, what's that?
What is that?
What is that?
Anyone asked you about it? Only one person asked me.
So, the action items, we're going to, we're going to do some of the things we've listed here. We'll look at some sort of contest. And at the September Commission meeting, we'll also just review, you know, if we want to make any adjustments to the annualized line, which is related to this, but it goes to the issue in terms of where we want to be in terms of intermediate targets before we get to 2030. Make sense?
Yep.
Thank you.
Bon to procurement requests from Mr. Jafari.
Yeah, you want the motion?
Right.
You know what? We are going to let him present. I think this is what I'm going to do.
As I speak to them.
I'll tell you what it is. I'll say.
Okay, that's fine. You've got your script. That's fine. Didn't have a script in the old days. We had no script in the old days.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Great. Somebody would be opposed to read the motion?
Nope, no, we're going to do it. Yeah, I'm sorry. We're going to let you kind of give the overview, and then we'll do the motion afterwards.
Oh, okay.
We're trying a new technique. I'm sorry.
Fine. Well, this bid is IFP 2022-25. These are the ABB Grid Shield 15 KV re-closes. This is part of our annual grid modernization initiative that we have, we started actually back in 2015. So, this bid is calling for basically four units that the cost approximately $26,000, $27,000 roughly. We sent the bid to 12 companies, only two responded. And the two that responded, the lowest responsible response was Wesco Distribution for $26,758 each, for a total price of $107,032. They didn't take any exceptions. That's exactly what we wanted to, which is good news. And the delivery date for those is 14 to 17 weeks. It hasn't changed since the last time that basically we ordered these. So, the question becomes, you know, what was the bid for the last, the last time that you went out to bid for this item in 2021, the cost was $20,243. And now, this year, we're paying $26,758. So, the difference is $6,515 now. And you could tell why, because the rising cost of the materials and labor and energy crisis and market volatility, so all factored into that. So, I'm asking the board if you could kindly give me permission, authorization, to spend $107,032 to purchase these four units for 2022.
Madam Chair, a question?
Yes.
How solid is the delivery dates with the supply chain?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what they give us. Unfortunately, you know, for this particular item, I think we're going to get it within 17 weeks, you know, but lately, they haven't met really the target date. So, it's hard to tell, but we're hoping that, you know, they keep the 17 weeks as they promised.
Is there any penalty if they don't get it?
No, unfortunately, there is not. If they don't, there is an escalating and de-escalating factors that we've seen now with the materials that we are ordering, because of the uncertainty of the market. So, I don't think it's going to be de-escalating, the cost, it's going to be escalating.
Yeah.
More than likely, it's going to go up, like everything else. But, you know, these are the chances that we get. Unfortunately, you know, there is no flexibility into pricing as we see the new bids coming out, you know, for every, all the materials.
Sure.
We can't, they can't commit to a price.
All right. Any other discussion? Without further discussion.
You ready for the motion? Yep. Move that proposal IFP 2022-25 for IBB Grid Shield 15 KV re-closes be awarded to Wesco Distribution, Inc. for $107,032. And I guess that's one cent, I think you probably meant there. Or is it zero?
Four, four of them.
Well, you've got an extra zero in the motion. There's an extra one in the motion. You've got an extra, you've got an extra zero in the agenda.
Yeah.
Pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 164, Paragraph 56D, on the recommendation of the general manager.
Second?
Is that the recommendation on the acting general manager or the interim general manager?
Acting.
Should be interim general manager.
Acting.
Actually, this week, it should be acting.
Acting or interim?
And then, July 1st, it's interim.
Oh, so, okay. All right, so, okay. So, you're acting now? So, it should be acting, added to the motion?
Sorry, Colleen is the one I think who did this.
Oh, so you did it? I'm sorry. You're right.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Correct me if I'm wrong. So, I think general manager.
Very good. Okay.
All commissioners who are in favor, say aye.
Ms. Pacino, aye. It's Coulter, aye.
Marlene Navita, aye. Cast is 4-0.
Yep. Thank you.
And we want scheduling. And we would want to schedule a... And we would like to plan going forward as far as we can for the third Thursday of each month, unless it's a holiday.
That's fine with me.
Thank you so much.
I'm not going anywhere anytime soon.
So that would be the next one would be Thursday, July 21st. And no meeting in August because that is also the same week as when the Vermont program is. Is any, and then November, sure, there's that.
One week early.
Thursday.
So the 17th on November, yeah.
The week prior would be the exception for that. Any comments about that?
Nope. I'm fine with that.
Thinking anything, Bob, about the Thursday of the month?
Just the 21st. It should be here.
Okay. So that you can plan on it going forward.
No, I should be there that week.
Okay. And next week is our second joint meeting with the SLF Board on Economic Development. The next will be at 6:00 PM at Town Hall for Commissioners and SLF Board and some other Town Hall members. And lastly, our warrant schedule for July, we have Mr. Coulter covering the cab, Mr. Talbit covering AP, and Mr. Stempet covering payroll.
I owe Bob one, I'm sure he covered for me tonight, so at some point, I owe Bob.
It's okay.
The schedule is on page five of the book here. Any other comments before we go into executive session?
It's, no. Tuesday's the meeting?
Thursday, the 21st.
But no, the 28th is the joint?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I forward, did you guys a calendar invite from the SLF Board?
Did you send out an invite on that yet?
Yep, I went out a couple hours ago from the SLF Board.
Well, I was kind of busy. Okay.
Yes, Karen, there are...
I'm sorry, these slides that were presented earlier, could they, they're not in the packet? Will they be on the website?
They'll be on the website, they should be in the packet.
They should be in the packet.
They get it too. Well, all right, so they haven't been posted yet to the website, it probably won't happen until Monday.
Thank you. Okay.
I just need to get in the habit of knowing where I'm going.
Could we read the motions?
Yes, very good. Move that the Board of Commissioners go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 164, Section 47D, exemption from public records and open meeting requirements of certain instances to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate if the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body and to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiation with non-union personnel.
Second. All those in favor?
Ms. Pacino, aye.
Ms. Colter, aye.
Marlene Abita, aye.
Ms. Colter, aye.
Okay. Very good.
Erica, how did you want to, given the new configuration, did you want to go to the GM conference room or, how did you want to?
Normally, we do...
Did I call in or to a different number?
Yeah, or Dave, I can call you again, does that work?